Commission meeting to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs. Commissioner Helmer?
Here.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Here.
Public comments under Government Code 54954.3. Members of the audience may address the Commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the Commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. Have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the information and consent calendar. There are two items. One, the approval of minutes from the February 22, 2022, meeting. And second, the Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council for approval of the 2021 General Plan Progress Report. If there is no need for any discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion. Does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Jacobs made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Abstain.
Yes, 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 that's fair. So, four, and then one abstention. Commissioner Stop and Brink. Moving right along to public hearings, we have one item. Planning Commission adoption of Resolution Number 022P-003, approving conditional use permit application CUP 21-10 for a cannabis facility at 1821 Mercantile Lane.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, tonight staff recommending approval of application CUP, conditional use permit application 2110, and subsequently approving Resolution 022P-003, approving with conditions for a commercial cannabis facility at 1821 Mercantile Lane. On September 28 of 2021, the Community Development Department received and accepted an application for the development of a commercial cannabis cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing facility at 1821 Mercantile. As we're aware with the approvals, the land use process for cannabis companies or cannabis facilities in the city are subject to a conditional use permit in addition to a regulatory permit reviewed and issued by the Police Department. And since this is a new build, it does require consideration of site plan review and environmental considerations under the California Environmental Quality Act. Once the application was deemed complete, staff requested comments from the necessary departments, and this proposal includes conditions of approval, and the proposed conditions of approval reflect feedback from those necessary departments. So, the manufacturing business and light development regulations, there are several development regulations that staff evaluates prior to recommending approval of a conditional use permit and site plan review. The site plan application has been reviewed for compliance with the Kalanga Plan and Zoning Code and meets all applicable requirements for the proposed use based on type, location, and site constraints. So, the proposed project consists of the construction of two new buildings to support the indoor cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing of cannabis and cannabis products. So, Building 1 is approximately 29,591 square feet with roughly 19,272 square feet of cultivation space. It has a nominal amount of space for distribution, manufacturing, office, and break room, and it has a very similar square foot allocation for Building 2 of cultivation space, distribution, and manufacturing space. That building, Building Number 2, is 26,591 square feet. In terms of general plan consistency, the general plan designation for the parcel is manufacturing and business with a zoning designation of manufacturing and business light. The project proposal is consistent with all the development regulations for commercial cannabis developments in addition to the issuance of a city cannabis regulatory permit and state of California permit. Currently, the applicant has a commercial cannabis regulatory permit application under review with the Police Department. So, in terms of surrounding land use, to the north, we have an agricultural setting. To the south is an additional industrial zone property. To the west, we have commercial property as well as residential property, and then to the east, we have additional residential property. In terms of breaking down the analysis for the site plan review, there are several components that staff looks at, and we'll kind of go through these. In terms of access for this property, the primary access point for the development will be located on Mercantile Lane at the southeast corner of the property via the one-way driveway on the south portion of the property, and ingress will be provided through the same driveway as defined on the site plan. According to the Fire Department and City Engineer, there's adequate space on-site for public safety maneuvering and turnaround. The need for additional ingress egress points are not necessary. In terms of utilities, all utilities, water, sewer, natural gas are readily available for connection on Mercantile Lane. All utility connections shall be shown, will be required to be shown on the final site plan and approved by the Planning Department and Public Works Department. In terms of storm runoff, all on-site stormwater drainage runoff shall run to the existing storm drain facilities at Mercantile Lane. That entire subdivision pretty much drains to that basin that's designed for that subdivision. In terms of gas, natural gas, as we mentioned, water and sewer facilities are all available in Mercantile Lane to readily available, readily available to serve that development in addition to sewer as well. In terms of meters, there'll be meters for both water and natural gas, which shall be identified on the final site plan when submitted to the Planning Department for final approval. There will be separate landscape and domestic meters for water in order to differentiate between landscape water and domestic water per the city policy. And since this is a secure facility, the water meters shall be located outside of the secure area, and gas meters shall be placed in a location that are protected from damage. If gas meters are located on-site within the secured area, the applicant shall work with the Public Works Department to determine the best practice for reading those meters. Typically, these are radio read meters so they can access those. Parking, in terms of parking, the requirements for these facilities is one stall per 1,000 square feet of building space. So, the proposed development has met the requirement by providing 56 vehicle stalls considering the use of on-street parking to accommodate the one additional parking stall. The total square footage of the structure at 56,182 requiring at least 57 stalls. The parking lot lighting has been provided as required in the Plan and Zoning Code as well. In terms of refuge containers, oh, also, in addition to parking, at the onset of the project, the proposed temporary generators, which we'll talk about a little bit further in the report, will reduce the available parking from 56 to 48 parking stalls while they're in use. Further information regarding the temporary generators is provided in the use permit discussion of the staff report. But we feel, but in terms of the parking, staff doesn't feel that based on the temporary nature of the generators, that there'll be a need to increase the required parking requirement, nor restrict the use of the temporary generators on the basis of reduced parking availability. So, there's plenty of on-street parking throughout the industrial park. Not everything's developed at this time, so there is a lot, and with the being temporary in nature, if there are a few additional vehicles that have to be displaced into the street, it's not a huge deal at this point. We know that some of the other facilities use the additional on-street parking as well. For refuge containers, the development provides for the required refuge containers, and the size, shape, and location are consistent with that of the city requirements. The landscaping, the proposed landscaping exceeds the minimum requirement for landscape areas as it relates to site frontage, parking, highway setbacks, and equipment screening. A separate final landscape plan will be submitted to the Community Development Department for review and approval, and that's been added as a condition. In terms of fencing, fencing adjacent to Jane Avenue, which is Highway 33, will be constructed of a combination of a three-and-a-half-foot wrought iron fence on top of a two-and-a-half-foot decorative block CMU wall. The heights of the fencing shall not exceed six feet in total. Fencing along Juniper Ridge and the southern property line will be comprised of a six-foot CMU block wall with decorative cap. In terms of lighting, there was a photometric diagram provided in the package, and lighting has been reviewed and approved by the Police Department to ensure that there's no spillover lighting as well as meeting or exceeding that 1.5-foot candle of power to the lights to ensure that all the security cameras, and there's enough lighting to make sure that all of those cameras can be well, that they can pick up any kind of visibility they need to. In terms of off-site improvements, the applicant will furnish all the, furnish and install off-site sidewalk, driveway approaches, and street lighting on Mercantile Lane frontage as approved by the City Engineer. So, as we dig into the conditional use permit analysis, the CUP analysis will look at the operational criteria such as security, odor control, noise, hours of operation. The regulatory permit reviewed by the Police Chief and approved by the City Council will consider these items in more depth and to ensure full compliance with the City Planning Zone, City Planning and Zoning Code related to commercial cannabis operations. So, I've provided in the project summary kind of a definition that's kind of based on, from the state in terms of what cultivation consists of, what distribution of cannabis is, and what the manufacturing of cannabis is. Cultivation obviously has a very broad, it's a broad category in terms of the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, and trimming of cannabis. In addition, cultivation means a location where commercial cannabis is planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, graded, or trimmed, or a location where any combination of those activities occur. Distribution, as we know, is moving the product from one license type to another, and then manufacturing is the processing of that cannabis product, which includes packaging as well. So, the state has actually broadened their different license classes under manufacturing. So, we've definitely been able, as we've narrowed our requirements and basically looking at what we're approving, that if you're manufacturing but you're just packaging, that would fall under a manufacturing license, so it'd qualify. The locations, 1921 Mercantile Lane in the current industrial park. In terms of security, the applicant's site protection strategy will address all forms of security concerns. It will be required to meet all the security requirements of the Plan and Zoning Code. The Police Department is currently reviewing the security plan, including camera placements, access controls, on-site and perimeter security to ensure that they meet the satisfaction of the Police Department. And a lot of times, these will occur, you know, post-approval, and they'll be tweaking things as they do the installations. Building access, all employees and unauthorized personnel will enter the building at a designated entry area after checking with security personnel at the site entrances, who will grant authorization to the facility. In order to control odor while producing all the above capacity and remaining compliant, the facility will take several measures to ensure the odor does not escape and become a public nuisance. These measures include HVAC controls, use of carbon filters, odor neutralizers, air purifiers and filters, and operational controls as well. This facility is looking to operate 24 hours a day, Monday through Sunday. The estimated employees is 15 to 20. I know just from history on some of these facilities, especially cultivation, those can go higher during harvest time, but 15 to 20 is looking probably at their, you know, constant full-time employees. And again, parking is kind of looked at again in the CUP, but as we were just reiterating the 56 stalls. Fuel storage and other potential hazardous materials, because there is volatile manufacturing proposed, the applicant will be required to meet with the fire marshal and building official to determine the level of safety protection required based on the desired storage of solvents and any other hazardous materials known on-site. Known chemicals or solvents to be used will have to be provided to the fire chief for review and approval. As we know, energy has been an issue as of late with our communications with PG&E. And so, and as we've looked at before, I think on a prior project, is looking at a temporary solution for power as we wait for PG&E to do their final upgrades to their bank here at the Kalanga Station off of Merced. And so, the energy in sense, intensive portion of the project will be the indoor cultivation function. So, grow lighting creates the highest portion of energy consumption and is also the main contributor to the HVAC cooling, making the combined effects of lighting the majority of energy load in indoor cannabis facilities. This facility will feature LED lights, and the cultivation managers will assess the lighting needs to each stage of the cultivation cycle. So, typically, these projects would be supplied by PG&E. However, the city was notified by PG&E that power availability in Kalanga is limited due to the limitations in power availability. So, this project applicant is requesting the use of temporary power in the form of four diesel generators for use once they are operational until PG&E has upgraded the bank to the Kalanga substation. The time of actual use is expected to be very short or may not even occur based on kind of conversations with the applicant, considering building lead times and construction schedule. And so, the building will take about 10 months to arrive once ordered, four months to build, four months for tenant improvements, and two months to wrap up construction and get online. Considering a potential two-year lead time to get up and running, the use of the temporary generators may be limited if not even be necessary because PG&E should have power by 2024. So, that's a couple of years away. And that project is already in the works. COVID actually slowed down the processing of that new bank. So, I mean, the city has considered the use of temporary generators in the past for these types of facilities due to the amount of power demand these facilities require. When doing so, staff requires the preparation of an acoustical study to ensure that the running of said generators do not exceed both the city standards for noise as well as the Model Community Noise Ordinance established by the state that the city defers to for non-transportation-related noise sources that may affect noise-sensitive land uses. The applicant retained the services of Saxby Acoustics, certified INCs acoustical engineers to analyze the project and determine if the proposed generators may be used on a temporary basis without affecting noise-sensitive land uses. Residential uses are located southwest of the project site. During the course of the analysis, the acoustical engineer stated the report that the proposed four T4D 1,000 generators needed to be replaced with the Kohler Generators 100 KW Diesel Generator with manufacturer's sound enclosure, which is quiet, which is a quieter model. So, in addition to a quieter model, a six-foot tall sound wall along the southern boundary of the project site will be required to reduce project noise levels to below the acceptable levels at nearby residences. The noise level contours resulting from the implementation of those noise measures reduce noise levels to the existing residents to below 44 decibels and 58 decibels at the adjacent commercial properties. This would be acceptable under the Model Community Noise Ordinance. Staff also reached out to the San Joaquin, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District regarding the project, including the use of diesel generators, temporary use. And then on February 17, we did receive a comment letter in response to our request. A permit would need to be acquired from the air district prior to the use. However, the district was not explicitly, did not explicitly permit or deny the request for those diesel generators at that time, but it still will be on the onerous of the applicant to obtain those licenses or those permits from the air board as well as potentially from the EPA as well. So, in terms of the recommendations, their proposed generators would need to be lessened to the recommendations in the sound site to meet those, the sound analysis. So, they will be looking at those options for that particular use. In terms of water use, the applicant expecting to use approximately 2.35 acre foot, which is about 765,000 gallons of water for the cultivation operation. This is not expected to affect the city's ability to provide treated water to the community. These facilities reuse the majority of their produced water and recycle it back into the operations to limit impact of treated water use. Terms of wastewater disposal, the applicant will not introduce any toxic chemical waste or solvents into the local waste stream. In terms of solid waste, they will contract with our local solid waste hauler Mid Valley, who can actually take all of the green trimmings. They can pretty much utilize any of the typical solid waste and green waste that would come from these facilities. In terms of distance from sensitive receptors, commercial cannabis operations shall be not located within 930 feet, measured from the property boundary from existing school or proposed school site as identified in the general plan. And for purposes of this section, school means any public or private school providing instruction to kindergarten or grades 1 through 12. The applicant does meet this setback requirement. Public notices were issued on March 10 and sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the site as required by local and state law. Staff did not receive any comments back related to these public, this public notification. In terms of environmental review, the Community Development Department has determined that the proposed project supports a Planning Commission finding that it qualifies for a categorical exemption for the community, for SEQA, and the project qualifies the Class 32 exemption for infill projects. With, in terms of the fiscal impact, cannabis facilities generate tax revenue as well as licensing revenue to the city on an annual basis. The estimated tax revenue from this project is expected to be approximately $400,000 per year. This amount will be refined, will be refined once the canopies of the grow rooms are finalized and floor plans are approved by the Building Department. So, I kind of did some calculations based on the grow rooms as well as the areas identified because on the floor plan, they typically identify all the locations of the types of uses, and so typically, that would be shown. And so, I was able to get some type of calculation based on the square foot tax that we have and as well as the square foot tax for cultivation. So, with that, there are multiple findings that have to be, that have to be found by the Commission related to the site plan findings as well as the conditional use permit findings, and staff feels that all these findings can be met for this particular project. So, with that, that concludes my report. If the Commission has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. And Chairman, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open for anybody who wants to speak for or against this meeting while we're waiting. Commissioner Stop and Brink, question?
Yeah, Sean, on the environmental review application, page number 10, there's an error. All the other dates in here are correct except for this is dated September 28, 2022.
Okay. On page, you said page 10?
Page 10 of the environmental review application.
Oh. That would be, that would be my error in, yeah.
I'm not pointing fingers, I was just to make sure.
No, it's okay.
Get the document corrected.
It should be 2021, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Stop and Brink? Commissioner Pruitt? Commissioner Helmer?
Sean, under the parking?
Yes.
Session, in the second paragraph, I was a little confused. There's a sentence that starts like, "Staff does not feel," and there's a double negative in there, which makes it seem the reverse of what you really want to say.
Where's the double negative?
You say, "Staff does not feel," and then there's no need. So, if staff doesn't feel that there's no need, then change the "no" to an "a," and it makes sense.
You got it.
Okay. Then, I noticed on the plans, and I've never seen this on any other, maybe it's just I haven't noticed, but there's a hidden vault in Building 1, and I just wanted to know what the hidden vault was for.
AJ is here, he can ask the question. You can do it right there if you'd like, just if you press the, that finger.
First of all, hi, everyone.
Hi.
Nice meeting you. Okay, the hidden wall is basically, you know, this business is a little bit, you know, as a business owner, like, we scared because of the, all the things that happening that, you know, they're coming, they're rob, grab, and go. It's like this, in all the facilities, cannabis facility, and all over is like this. So, the owner decided to have like some, some sort of the hidden vault in somewhere to, you know, keep some, if you want to keep some, like, anything, like, it could be the product, it could be the money, it could be anything that we can put in, like all the document, everything that we can put it there. So, it's a small hidden vault, it's not that big, like, if you see it, it's, I think it's four by 10 or something like that, yeah. So, that's it, that it's.
I was just curious because I'd never seen it on any other plans before.
Sometimes you need to keep your cash until you have to pay your taxes, they have to come to pick it up, so you wanted to save it somewhere safe, you know, to be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, what if the Air Pollution Control District does not approve the permits? Is there a backup plan for, and the generators are needed?
That would be a question for AJ, but I imagine if there, there's no alternative to the generators, they would have to basically wait till the, till they're able to get permanent power. And I think they'll know pretty soon whether or not that's going to be the case because they're going to have to submit that application relatively soon, once they have the documents that are needed, to ensure that they have that permit. I would imagine prior to moving forward with the, you know, moving forward with the project any further to ensure that if the project is in fact complete, they don't want to have a building complete without power.
Right, and I just, my experience with the Air Pollution Control District was sometimes they're very amenable and sometimes it's a little more difficult. So, I was just wondering if there was a contingency plan if they didn't permit it.
Yes, one of our contingency plan is to having solar panel over there. So, we were thinking over, I think I was talking with you about that. We haven't decided yet, but that's our backup plan to, because usually in this kind of business, like in these kind of warehouses, you should, we should put like the air conditioning system and packaging, everything on their, on their roof. On this particular project, we haven't put anything because of the power issue that we had. We left it empty, so it's pretty open, like, it's about like 56,000 something square feet on the roof, a little bit more because it has an angle. And we planning to use, that's our backup plan to using the solar panel. If we couldn't get that, that power, I mean, till that time, because the construction by itself will take about like 20 months, 24 months, two years. So, from now on, based on whatever, what we heard from Rob Howard, the guy who's working in the industrial PG&E, said like in 2024, we should have the power ready to go over there. So, our backup plan is kind of solar panel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all my questions, but I did want to just note that I really liked the general conditions of approval that the Fire Department put together.
Yeah, that's Eric Beasley, who's now, who's new over at the Fire Department. He's kind of, he's kind of the one that I work with now at the Fire Department. So, they put together their general, and they just mark off what they need, and then I'm able to just detach it as, in addition to the conditions, so yeah.
That was very helpful.
I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Jacobs?
Just, yeah, one question. These rooms are about 19, 1800 square feet each, each grow room. They have one door going in and out, is that compliant with egress? I mean.
That's normal, yeah, that's normal. I know that the other facility at Next Green Wave, that each individual grow room has one access door in and out.
That wouldn't be a, if there was a fire in there, it wouldn't be a problem, or people could get out.
Well, I don't think there, it's not considered occupiable space because it's not, and that, it, I know that on that project, it went through, and Next Green Wave went through, and I know even the Haikoa is the same setup where each grow room has just a single door going into those facilities.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's three doors going in and out of this whole building for 18, 20 people or so. If there was a problem in there, I mean, you could get.
It's all, and the Building Department will review the actual formal plans, but typically, you know, as long as it meets the criteria of the Building Code for egress and emergency access, there's a certain distance between each emergency access, emergency exit door and.
Okay. That's all I have. And this is a public hearing, do you have anything else you would like to add? Or, yes, good, okay. Nothing, it's just, it's just up to you, I don't know if you have any. Yes, okay. With that, the public hearing will be, we'll close the public hearing. If there's no, any need for any further discussion, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pruitt made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
No. Moving right along, motion carries. Department discussion and potential action items, we have none. Department reports?
I have none. Oh, I did, actually, I did want to give the Commission an update. Right now, staff is currently, we presented the expense budget to the council at the last council meeting, and I just wanted to inform the Commission that staff did put a recommended expense to start the general plan update process. So, I put in, I say staff. So I put in, I say staff, I put in $100,000 for the next fiscal year to potentially start securing a consultant. I'm going to be working on trying to get cost estimates prior to the council approving the overall budget, because it is going to be a multi-year expense. And so I know these, these general plans take a while to go through all the processes of the update, and it's a multi-year process and a very expensive process, but we want to make sure the council's aware, yeah, we may spend $100,000 this year, but it may be multiple $100,000 plus in subsequent years as well, so. But we, we feel it's a need, there's a time we need to start, and it's time to update the general plan. Where I think we're on the cusp of seeing some active economic development and, you know, home development, which is just going to steamroll, I think, to see a lot of variety of development in town, and we need to really have a clear direction on the way the community wants to go. Yeah.
Sean, you reach out to the same group that did the last update?
So PMC did the original general plan update, SWCA did the environmental impact report for it, and surprisingly, I'm working with an SWCA now on our trail projects for environmental, and PMC actually did the environmental review for the Heritage Senior Assisted Living Facility there on Phelps. I'll probably reach out to them just to probably get some quotes, but it would be probably a formal RFP that we would issue ultimately to get, to make a selection on a, on a consultant, but, yeah, I think it's time to start looking at that. I, I just don't want to continue to do a bunch of zoning changes, it's just a lot of work to do a lot of these zoning changes, and so it'd be nice to have a good direction and path in terms of what the vision for the community is. And it's been 15 years, no, it's been longer than that, we're in 2022, huh? Yeah, 20, 23 years, yeah, because 2009, so it's been a while. So I think it's, I think it's time to start looking at it, and the city's doing a little better financially, and I think this is the opportunity for the city to, to really get through this, because there's not a lot of funding opportunities or funding sources to get a general plan update done, so. That's it.
Question, do you have an update on Cambridge?
So, this is, yeah, so Cambridge originally was supposed to be energized February 28th. Apparently, there was an issue with an encroachment permit, getting, PG&E getting an encroachment permit from Caltrans, and they, PG&E then sends us an email saying that we've rescheduled it for May 10th. I told them that was not acceptable, I've talked to our government rep, we've gone up the ranks in Fresno with PG&E, and they are working on trying to move up the construction date, because it was very weird that they were ready to go February 28th, and now all of a sudden, and it was just the fact that they forgot to put an engineer stamp on their plans to Caltrans. But then all of a sudden, now it pushes it out two and a half months to get it energized. So we told them, you know, there's a lot of concerns about having that road restriped, the signal's up, we need to get this thing done. And so we've conveyed that message very strongly to our, our count rep, as well as the engineer, the construction engineer for PG&E, and so they are, I got an email today saying that they are working to try to get this done sooner. So I have a feeling, I'm expecting it to get done sooner. So we will be the squeaky wheel.
Commissioner announcements. Chairman announcements, welcome back. Commissioner Stop and Brink, yes.
All familiar faces, good to meet a new one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Look forward to working together in the future.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the status of emails, city emails for us?
Oh, that's right, I think Larry, I, I think he had sent off information to our IT guys to have those set up. I don't know if they ever, we'll have to follow up with them and find out why they haven't set those emails up, because I know that Larry had reached out to them right away after we talked about it last time.
Okay, and then follow up on that, what are the chances of us getting business cards?
I can ask about that.
Thank you.
And then also remember, Form 700 forms are due by, is it April 1st or April 4th? April 1st, to be safe.
The first.
The first, so a week from Friday, so. And with that, meeting adjourned.